Good evening. My name is Jan Warren and I am president of the League of Women Voters of the Grand Traverse Area. It is our pleasure to sponsor this forum focusing on the eight candidates running for four seats on the Traverse Area City Commission and the two candidates running for mayor. I'd like to welcome you this evening. Our local league believes strongly that democracy is not a spectator sport. And we have a long history of sponsoring forums such as this one. We are a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates for public office or political parties. It is our mission to promote and facilitate the active involvement of citizens in government of on all levels. We want you to hear from the candidates, why they're running for office, why they believe they are qualified, and how they would deal with the pressing issues facing Traverse City. You can find additional information about the candidates and the language for the Brown Bridge Trust Fund ballot proposal on the vote411.org website. If for some reason you're not able to access it directly, you can access it via our website, lvw.org. The forum will last about ninety minutes and is being recorded by Traverse Area Community Media for later viewing on Channel 189 and streaming on their website, tacam.tv. A special thanks to them for their generosity in partnering with us over the years on our forums. League volunteers have been and will continue to be passing out cards for you to use in writing questions for the candidates. Please note that on the front of the cards are some typed written suggestions to help you draft good questions. Please complete the evaluation, that's the yellow form that you found on your seat. We take your feedback seriously. It's blue? It's blue, thank you. We take your feedback seriously and use your comments to improve the content and the forum of our forums. And if you would, please add a statement about how you learned about tonight's forum. It's now my pleasure to introduce our moderator for this evening's forum, Kevin Essabagers. Kevin is the main news anchor for TV9 and 10 News, the CBS affiliated television station covering Traverse City. Kevin has spent the better part of twenty years covering issues important to those in Traverse City as well as all of northern Michigan. Beginning his career at 9 and 10 News in 1997, he is originally from Fruitport, Michigan, holds a bachelor's degree in broadcasting from Central Michigan University, as well as a master's degree in media management from CMU. And although he didn't give this to me in his bio, he has won two Michigan Emmy Awards and numerous other broadcasting awards. So we're very fortunate to have him with us this evening. Kevin?
Thank you, Jan. Thank you all for being here. Going to first explain the format and the ground rules so that everyone's on the same page and these have been provided to the candidates ahead of time. I would first of all like to remind you to please turn off all cell phones and other electronic devices. Thanks for that. You don't want to be... We ask that you remain silent and refrain from any vocal reactions for or against any of the candidates or statements made by them. In addition, please hold your applause until the end of the forum. However, if you cannot hear a candidate, you can just raise your hand and we will ask that candidate to please speak directly into the microphone. League volunteers, as she mentioned, are passing out cards. So you can write your questions on those, pass those to the aisles when you've finished writing your question. Those will be collected and screened by league members for relevance, propriety, duplication. And we may not have time to ask all of the questions to the candidates, but we will consolidate those questions that aren't asked and forward those on to the candidates so that they're aware of the concerns of the folks who showed up tonight. We've also requested that the candidates remain after the forum so that you have a chance to meet with them and talk one-on-one with them. We will start tonight with two-minute opening statements from each of the candidates so they can explain why they're running for office and other issues that they believe to be of most concern to the city. These will be followed by the questions submitted by you. The candidates will have one minute each to respond to that question. Finally, they will be given one minute for a closing statement at the end. The candidates will respond to each question in the order you see them, in alphabetical order. And as I go through the questions, each candidate will have the chance to be the first one to answer a question. A league representative will be keeping time over here. Going to alert you, see the green panel is fifteen seconds left, so that will be given after forty-five seconds. And at the end of your one minute, stop. You may complete a sentence if you're in mid-sentence, mid-thought, but I have no problem interrupting you. If you get along on that. So let's get started and I'll just start by introducing the candidates. We start with Katie Bertodato, Jim Carruthers, Evan Daly, Dave Durbin, Tom Mayer, Kristi Minervini, Shay O'Brien, Roger Putman, Amy Shamro, and Ashley Walter. And we will begin our opening statements, two minutes per candidate, with Katie Bertodato.
Thank you. My name is Katie Bertodato. I moved up here sixteen years ago to go to NMC, attend their aviation program. I flew for two years there and fell in love with Traverse City, started a family. I'm raising my children here. After NMC, I did go to U of M. I completed that degree in 2016. I know the timing there sounds strange. I had to commute from here to there. And then I was invited to give the student commencement speech after graduation there. After that, I obtained a certificate through MIT in commercial real estate analysis and development to so that I could work here to promote responsible growth. I'm on the governmental relations committee through the chamber, the housing advocacy committee through Housing North. And I applied for the appointed seat last year and Roger Putman is sitting in that seat now, but I did make it to the top three, so I'm pretty happy about that. I'm running because I have two teenage boys and I would like for them to be able to raise their families here. So that means we need to focus on economic diversification so they can get jobs here. If we want to diversify our economy and bring more business here, we need to focus on housing and we need to focus on childcare. I've been in a position as a single mom where I have my day job and then I go to work at night so that I can pay for childcare so I can keep my day job. And that's rough. There's a lot of houses here that they're dual income and if you're a single parent, you're working double time. So if we could have some more affordable childcare, and we are working on that, affordable housing and affordable for whom is I'm sure going to be a topic tonight, but then we can really promote smart, responsible growth here in Traverse City. Thank you.
Thank you. We're asking, we've got a request for the volume to be turned up just a bit in-house here. Moving on to Jim Carruthers.
Thank you, Kevin. My name is Jim Carruthers and I'm the mayor of Traverse City. I'd like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. You always do a great job and thank you for your leadership. I've been mayor of Traverse City for four years. I was a commissioner for eight years prior to that, a city commissioner, and then I was in Park and Rec for eight years prior to that. I've had the good fortune to work with a host of great people on the city commission. Two of them are here with me tonight. And while on that commission, we've done a lot of work to make Traverse City better, in my opinion. We've increased infrastructure spending on sidewalks, trails, streets, water and sewer lines, and we're talking about a stormwater management plan. We've supported housing opportunities through pilots, neighborhood enterprise zones, Renaissance zones, upzoning, sales of a city property that created the Depot neighborhood. I've also supported opportunities for housing those experiencing homelessness by supporting the Safe Harbor on purchase of the city property that now houses our warming shelter for those experiencing homelessness in the wintertime. I've also supported a diversity of all people in our community, no matter what religion, race, sexual orientation they may be, and was active in helping to support the nondiscrimination ordinance that we did pass through a citywide vote a number of years ago. I've also taken action on climate change as your mayor by supporting a hundred percent renewable goal for the city of Traverse City and supporting Traverse City Light and Power to take on a hundred percent goal as well. We've created a green team to help us through that whole process to manage every aspect of what we do energy-wise and to try to green up our actions and our facilities here in Traverse City. And I've also joined the nationwide group called Climate Mayors, which is a group of mayors that came on board when our government decided to pull out of the Paris Climate Accords. And currently, I am advocating to build a new senior center in its existing location on the Bayfront. Top three issues for me are balancing our tourist economy, our tourist agricultural economy with a high-wage, year-round jobs economy. Okay, I'll stop.
That's your time.
And we'll cover more.
Evan Daly.
Hi, my name is Evan Daly. I'm thirty-one, lifelong resident of the Traverse City area. My wife and I are raising two wonderful little girls. I'm in our home on South Union Street in the Sopho neighborhood. I've been on the Traverse City Parks and Recreation Commission for a little over a year now. I'm also on the organizing committee for Northern Michigan DSA, which I've been doing for a little over two years. I work full-time at Hagerty, I also work part-time at Reduno. I'm running to give back to a community that has given me everything that I have and to be a voice for working people on city government. I'd like to see the creation of a Traverse City for all, not just for the wealthy few. I think that the top two issues in our community are the ever-rising cost of living, particularly with housing, coupled with low wages, and also sustainable growth and development in our community. To combat that high cost of living, I think the city needs to aggressively pursue the creation of hundreds of affordable homes. I think we need to encourage businesses to raise their wages and improve and expand on their benefits that they offer. I'd like, or I support unions and I would encourage the, you know, more workers within our community to join or organize unions of their own. And I would like the city government to lobby aggressively for the state legislature to either raise the statewide minimum wage higher than it is or allow communities to do so on their own. I also think that communities like Traverse City should be allowed to enact things like rent control, to stabilize rents in our community. As far as sustainable development goes, I think we need to allow for livable density in our downtown and along certain corridors to discourage sprawl. I'd like to create and expand pedestrian, bicycle, and transit infrastructure. I think we need to enforce strong environmental protections in regard to runoff and development and preserve our green space. And I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Durbin.
Hi, I'm Dave Durbin. I've been in the Traverse City area for twenty years now. And in the last few years, I've, we're talking with fellow neighbors, there's been an underlying theme that is, as much as we all love Traverse City and it's a beautiful place to live, I think we all would agree with that, there's an underlying theme that a lot of us, just because we figured out a way to live here, doesn't mean we've got it made, you know? Living in Traverse City is half the issue. Being able to stay here, maintain your home, is the other half. So I agree that we need to be bringing in younger people. We need to develop our economy, make it more diverse. But we also have to keep an eye on the people who are already here. And, you know, that means the retirees, that means the young people that are already here, the single parents. There's a lot of focus on getting more people to live here. And we need that. We need to balance our existing demographics, so to speak. You know, I think we've all seen the reports that there's a gap in the age group of, I think it's mid-thirties to early forties, that family age. So we certainly need that. But the conversations I'm having with people who already live here is, it's tough to get by. We're having a hard time making ends meet. And that report that I'm referring to also demonstrated that, something we already knew, the cost of living in Traverse City is high. So my goal, the reason I'm running, is to provide a voice for those people. I've worked with a grassroots organization that involved, you know, retirees, young people, and we were able to bring our ideas together, talk respectfully, and take action. So if you're looking for something like that, I'm your guy. I'm Dave Durbin. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Moving on to Tom Mayer.
Thank you, Kevin. My name is Tom Mayer and I'll just read short bio-type thing to you. I was born in Highland Park, Michigan, that's inside the city of Detroit. And I have a high respect for women and I think this is very important in this election to make it clear. My wife, Susan Odgers, is a columnist for the Record Eagle and she also sits on the Human Rights Commission. We've been married thirty-seven years. My dear mother, who's passed away, I was very close to. We had a very close family. My parents are both passed. My oldest sister still looks after me like I'm the baby of the family, because I am. So I've represented women as an artist manager and there are absolutely no complaints about anything that I've ever done as an artist manager. And I just think that I don't want this election to be about a male, female, man, woman. I'm really kind of bothered a little bit by that because I want you to pick somebody who has the experience. I want you to pick somebody who's committed and has the time to do the job, okay? In this campaign, I've been receiving advice and support from mostly women who want me elected. They say I'm the most qualified. And you need to take into account, I have decades of experience with the city, the county, and the federal government. I know how to interact between all these levels of government, which is key. If you want dollars to come into the area, you have to know how to interpret regulations and be able to explain them to other people. I am a student of the brownfield plan, basically, as how the brownfield is devised to be an economic development tool. I'm actually against the overspending in a campaign and I'm limiting my campaign to $1,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi Minervini.
Hi, I'm Kristi Minervini. I'm a woman and I'm also the best qualified person for this job. I'm running for a two-year term on the city commission. I've, I'm an area resident for over twenty years now. I've been married and I've been a parent for as long. I am a business owner and employer here in Traverse City and have been for the last fifteen years. I own sanctuary handcrafted goods at The Commons. I know how to read a balance sheet. I know how to manage employees. I understand the complexities of running a business and I think a lot of times that that gets lost, the fact that the city of Traverse City is, in essence, a business. I've been a writer and an advocate on issues surrounding gender equality, smart growth, and ending homelessness, written countless columns for the Northern Express and for a blog. And I've been a community builder for the last twenty years. I've been very involved in organizations that are affecting positive change in our community. I was on the startup board of the Great Lakes Children's Museum. I was on the board of the Arts Council. I served eight years on Safe Harbor to bring that seasonal emergency shelter to fruition. I was on the starting board of the Impact One Hundred philanthropy group. I'm currently serving on Groundwork Center for Resilient Communities. My leadership experience extends to the city as well. I was the chair of the Arts Commission here for a couple of years and I'm currently serving on the Human Rights Commission, as well as chairing a group called Woman to Woman. And our primary mission is to get more women in elected and appointed positions. More important than my experience is, my resume, I should say, is my experience as being a doer. I'm not afraid to tackle difficult projects and see them through to completion. Thank you.
Thank you. Shay O'Brien.
Thank you, Kevin. My name's Shay and I was raised in this community by two loving parents. I grew up over in the Traverse Heights neighborhood. I went to the elementary school there. I graduated from Central High School and I attended some courses at NMC. Currently live on Fair Street. And I'm running for mayor because I want to offer the life that I grew up with to my children and other people's children. And I want to work with the elected officials, city staff, and the citizens to start to get things done and start to come up with solutions for what some would call all the right problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Putman.
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters as well for putting this on and of course the audience and the people taking part for becoming better educated as far as the type of candidates we have and the quality of the field we have. So thank you for being here. My name is Roger Putman. It's spelled P-U-T-M-A-N. That's why you see the black nameplate up here, but certainly, I'm currently serving the last year of a term vacated, and the commission vacated by Brian Hoz's resignation last year. And initially took up the opportunity to do something, have something to do after my retirement. And I found it's been more than having something to do. It's been, it's been a real lesson for me in life. And after seventy years, there's not many lessons left to learn, I guess. But I, basically, I'm a Navy vet. I was honorably discharged in 1970. I'm a former small business owner here in Traverse City. I basically have lived in Traverse City for thirty-five years. I'm the past president of the VASSA Board of Directors and have, and received the Lifetime Achievement Award for duty, for work with that organization in 1999. I was also the first executive director of Tart Trails when it was founded and formed in 1998 by a grant from Rotary Charities, back when the trails were separate units and we formed the organization to bring them together. There'd be much more, but condensing seventy years into two minutes is pretty difficult, so, and I don't want to put you to sleep with that minutia. But some of my priorities include protection of the environment. And certainly, we have a great place to live up here, but it's important that we understand climate change is real and our environment is in peril. So everything we do to help support the issue of addressing climate change is important, especially that big body of water we have out. And I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Shamro.
Thank you, first of all. Not for the first time tonight, I'm sure, as it gets down the line here. I want to thank the League of Women Voters as well and everyone for showing up. It's turned into a beautiful fall night out there, so we appreciate you coming in to hear what we have to say. I'm Amy Shamro. I'm mayor pro tem of the city of Traverse City currently. I'm finishing up a four-year term. I was elected in 2015. And I've been deeply honored to serve my community. I was born and raised in Traverse City. My mother was born and raised in Traverse City. My father moved up here and served on fire and ER and EMS. So I, he's been a great asset to me in helping me learn even more about the city. He knows maybe more than my mother and I do. But I say this more to say, this is such a wonderful community that I've been able to watch grow throughout my whole life. And it's that kind of growth that I've respected and it's that kind of growth that I want to see moving forward. Growth that's good for us, growth that provides opportunities, but growth that allows us to be the city that we are without losing that character. And that's, that's one of the reasons why I've been so invested over the years and why I want another, a chance to serve another four years. Because one of the major lessons I have learned is that your best-laid intentions in four years are not always going to come to fruition in four years. I've been very proud to serve with the mayor in getting Traverse City to a 2020 goal. Just Monday night, we actually hit it. I've been on the Light and Power Board for the last four years. It was a great, it's been a great pleasure to work with our other representative, Tim Warner, to set the 2040 clean energy goal. That's due to some coal contracts, so maybe we can even do it sooner. And also, as a member of the Light and Power Board, I've been addressing one of the issues that I see as key, which is not just keeping people here, but keep, bringing good jobs here. And on the Light and Power Board, I've had the honor to formulate the Fiber to the Premise Plan. We're breaking ground on that right now. I've been working on the Tart Trails to try and make that more vibrant with us, with on steering committees, as well as the Eighth Street Steering Committee. So today's a really special day, go walking out there and seeing all the lines down. So I hope I'll have an opportunity to serve four more years and continue the progress.
Thank you. And lastly, only because her last name ends in a W, Ashley Walter.
Thank you. My name is Ashley Walter and I live in Central Neighborhood with my family. And I'm celebrating my fifteenth anniversary tonight with my husband here at the forum. And he brought our oldest daughter here, our ten-year-old. And I think it's important for us all at any stage of life that we're in to be involved in the process. And whether we're ten or we're one-hundred-and-ten, that whatever season of life we're in, we're doing what we can. So that's why I'm running in my season of life, to share the voice and expertise and passion that I have for community with all of you. And it's an honor to run with this fantastic group of people. It's been fun and I've learned a lot from all of these people and really have enjoyed the process. I love listening to all of you and the vision that you have for Traverse City, this fair city that we all love. So I bring with me a passion for community and a kind of a, I'm not going to read you my long list of experience, but I'll show, share a few pieces of information. I have about twenty years of communications and marketing experience. And that's one area of expertise I'd love to bring to our city, is constituent relations, active representation, and proactive communications plan. I hear over and over again from community members that they didn't hear about it, you know, a new, even things that are good that happened to their neighborhood. They just would like some proactive communication. And I think we can all agree, that's a good part of democracy, is proactive communication. And so I'd love to help the city work on that plan and do an even better job with it. Thank you. And also very interested in protecting and preserving our environment. And that goes with housing density, that goes with our stormwater infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Environment is actually the topic of our first question. Round one, we'll begin with Jim Carruthers. And again, you get one minute for these responses. What are some actions that you've taken to protect our environment and oppose climate change?
Well, as I said in my opening remarks, I set a goal for the city of Traverse City to be a hundred percent renewable. I've worked with Light and Power over the years. We've had several renewable energy goals over the years to support that. We have various resolutions from microbeads to other areas to make sure that we're keeping our resources clean. We've set up a green team, which I'm on, to evaluate all of our city infrastructure and buildings to make sure that we're using less energy and being more efficient about our uses. We have electric cars. We're doing a lot of various things to make sure we're doing our part in Traverse City to be as green and energy-efficient as possible, which is, and less impactful on our environment. So, and as I said, when the president took us out of the Paris Climate Accords, I joined the Climate Mayors Group and am advocating with others around this country to do exactly what the Paris Accords wanted us to do, was to be green.
Mr. Daly.
And the question is what I, what I have done?
What you have done to protect our environment and oppose climate change.
Well, in my personal life, my wife and I have a one-car household. I ride my bike to and from work and to most destinations year-round. I've been doing that for a number of years now. I think that single-passenger automobile travel is one of the leading causes of climate change outside of heavy industry. So I think that, you know, the more that people are able to choose active transportation, certainly the better for our environment. Looking at what the city can do, though, I think that one of the big things that the city can do is reevaluate our stormwater runoff management system and, you know, make sure that as things are draining down our drains, anything that is not water is not making it into Gordon River and out into the bay. So that's one example there. Thank you.
Mr. Durbin.
Okay, yeah, I guess as far as myself personally, same kind of thing, you know, I walk and bike everywhere in the town. It's, we've got a beautiful, walkable, bikeable community. But I think the focus for me would be more on what, as a commissioner, I would do. And I think the city's done a great job so far. I think being a hundred percent renewable by 2020 is great. I think that light and power by 2040 is wonderful. I think when we talk about the stormwater runoff, you know, there's an Adopta Catch Basin program. If you're not aware of it, you should adopt a catch basin. I've got two of them. I just cleaned mine off this morning. And that allows water to run through the drains properly. One other thing, probably the biggest thing we can do as a community, is focus on density. That will have the biggest impact on our environment and climate change going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayer.
Thank you. Well, I would like to be the benchmark for what is green. I started a group here on September 11th of 2000 called the Traverse Bay Watershed Greens. And the idea of naming it that was because government... idea of naming it that was because government could be, in the future, an idealistic idea is the government is by watershed, not defined just by simple borders. So, we're in a watershed here for Grand Traverse Bay. I'm very committed to protecting the river and pushing development back a few feet or more, as much as possible. And I have had three occasions on the lower Boardman, just in the last couple of months, where I have highlighted problems. The city, right after the tree séance at the library, the next morning at 9:00 AM, the city was cutting trees on a steep slope on the river. And I, I spoke out about that right behind the post office. That is something people should not do. Do not cut trees on a steep slope.
Ms. Menneven.
Thank you. My work to protect the environment is surrounded mainly around my own advocacy and writing that I've done for the Northern Express. In 35 columns, the most contentious column that I wrote was about protecting our ecosystem, our wild birds and our wildlife by preventing free-ranging cats. And I really heard from a lot of people about that. But I do believe, I believe that's important. I've written columns on land use, density, better, better use of these surface parking lots and so forth. Transportation options. I look forward to being on the city commission when we look at ways to be encouraging people to come in and out of town in a more ecologically friendly way. I also look forward to working with the city on preventing runoff and protecting our tree canopy. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, like Evan, I walk and bike everywhere, bus a lot. And we're a one how, one-car household ourselves. I would like to see the city look at the municipal buildings and see where their inefficiencies are. Because if we're 100% renewable by 2020, all of those savings are going out the windows.
Mr. Putman.
Thank you. Basically, working hard to build awareness and certainly, everybody I chat with, talk with concerning climate change and what we can do as an advocacy to, to counter some of the difficulties that we're experiencing. One, recently, just a couple of, well, last week actually was, I participated in a, a meeting with the airport folks. Mr. Kevin Klein and his people invited us to discuss the issue, of course, of what happened with those trees that we're taking down. And trying to get some reasonable explanation as to why that took place, of course, was, was my goal. But I, by doing so, I learned a lot more about the, the issue than just ignoring the other side of the, the point of view. But certainly, one of the things we have to do is, of course, be concerned with what we're doing to this planet. And the catch basin thing that Mr. Durbin alluded to, I adopted two and I'm, I'm doing more than two.
Ms. Shamro.
Yes. As I mentioned in my intro, I'm very proud to have supported both the 2020 renewable goal, or green energy goal, and the 2040 green energy goal for Light and Power. As well as that, on Light and Power, I've been able to help support us introducing the green rate, which the city also just used to help leverage to our 2020 goal. That's allowed the community participate as well as, beyond just our city goal. And the other aspect of that is, we've, I'm very proud we've gotten to a board that will work with us on that. There's been ad-hocs over the years now to change the focus, and I believe the mayor sat on several of them as a former Light and Power member as well, to, as we've had seats open up, that's really been a focus. And being on the commission has allowed me to be part of that decision-making team to bring in people who are supporting us. On top of that, we have excellent staff that really does dig into the research and, as we ask, and really brings us great solutions. So, I'm always proud to work with them. And I've learned a lot personally on how I can improve on being more green myself. And it's a great community and thought process we have going here. And I hope to continue with that.
Ms. Walter.
Thank you. Climate change is real. And so, this is an awesome opportunity to have the first question of the night be something that I think our children will be asking. What did you do about climate change? What will our legacy be? And I'm proud to say, although there's always more we can do, it's a big focus of my life. I've worked on the Board of NORTA as the president for a couple of years for pro-walk and pro-bike initiatives and policy throughout our region to encourage and empower more people to get to work and school in a way that protects our, our climate. Of course, density as well. I'm a proponent of density in our downtown. And development will happen whether we like it or not. And so, if it's in a more dense area, that's where we need to be. I've also worked really hard to help elect other pro-environment candidates at the state and federal level, as well as the local. And first and foremost, I'm a coalition builder.
Thank you. Ms. Bertadaro.
So, the tree ordinance is something that we're going to be talking about, again, at the Governmental Relations Committee meeting on Friday. And I think there was a breakdown of communication when it comes to that ordinance. There needs to be a balance between the environment and development so that we have responsible regulations. We don't have things like what happened before was the, the tree ordinance was whispered about. It was pushed through really quickly, or tried to be. And in response, developers, to avoid that regulation, clear cut. And people were really upset by that. And I think that could have been handled better just by clearer communication. I support the extension of TIF 97. That vote will be coming up in February. And that will get rid of surface lots, which are horrible for our water and horrible for the environment. So...
All right. Thank you. Onto a very short question. We start with Mr. Dally. Has the potential of Beta been met? Explain.
The potential of Beta?
Yeah.
I think that in many ways it has. I think that for a community our size, we are very fortunate to have a transportation option like Beta. I think that there is more that it could do. I think that we could have expanded routes. I think that we could have more free routes like the Bay Line. I think that's just fantastic. And expanded hours of operation, you know, more overnight buses for people who work late shifts. So, I think that Beta has, has done an incredible service for us, for our community. We are fortunate to have it, but there is certainly more that Beta can do.
Mr. Dur.
Yeah. Beta is a wonderful service for our environment, for people who, who need it, not just to, to save our environment, but who need it to, to transport themselves around town. Having the Bay Line free from, from end to end, from east to west is just a fantastic option. You know, I've talked to business owners in town. And, and I've talked to Tyler Bevieu about this. And there is talk of expanding it to have earlier hours so that the people who work at the coffee shop that opens at 7:00 AM might be able to get there without having to drive into town and try to park. Those people have to spend eight bucks in parking before their day even starts. So, we need to be, we need to be conscientious of that. There's also talk of a north-south, maybe a, a franier that could be free as well to get people into town. So, they're doing a great job, but certainly, there's more that, that can be done.
My wife, Susan Rogers, and myself, we attend the meetings of the Beta Advisory Board, which reports to the Beta Board itself. And I've been doing that for a couple of years. So, one of the things that I suggested was that they have a north-south route. But I'll tell you, this last winter, the city does such a poor job on cleaning the sidewalks that you have to talk to people individually. Mr. Ferris deserves a commendation for cleaning his sidewalk on the property on West Front, where the building is not there. It's just a hole in the ground, the old Ford dealership lot. He cleaned it. And he cleaned it two years now on his own dollar because the city does a fairly poor job. It makes it very difficult for my wife and I to get around. My wife uses a manual wheelchair. So, Beta, this year, over the holidays, we used our car less and we used Beta more because it was very difficult navigating town. Even right here at the government building, I got on this as a county commissioner. And the response I got back from facilities was, it's really hard to do that, as in cleaning the sidewalk.
Ms. Menneven.
I'd like to commend Beta and the job they're doing. I think the entire team over there has really done an incredible, incredible job with their communications and their advocacy and outreach. They've been reaching out to larger, more cornerstone businesses in the community to help underwrite the costs of, of running the Bay Line. And I think it's been extremely successful. They've added benches to stops. Their ridership is way up. But I think there's more potential. I think that they can add that north side, north-south line. They can extend their hours and maybe continue to, to partner with businesses on, on accommodating employees. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, the Bay Line. I ride it every day in the wintertime to get to work. I'd like to see them possibly expand park and rides, Destination Downtown, something that's offered to downtown employees, I think has been pretty successful. You know, I'd also like to see more routes that are the 12 to 15-minute wait and either free or low cost. Everybody's talking about the north-south route. I'd use that to get to my parents' house. So, yeah, I think Bay Line, or Beta, has a lot of potential. It definitely has not been met, though.
Mr. Putman.
Well, I agree that Beta has not met their potential yet because it's, it's a virtually unlimited element of our, our, our city here. I, I've used it and I enjoy it. And, but I think the potential for expanding it to provide better and more service to allow a situation where we have park and rides, it's an increase in that to help reduce the congestion in the city. All of those cars, of course, a lot of them are driven by people who live in outlying areas that come to work in Traverse City and then leave during the day. So, by encouraging them, encouraging more park and ride opportunities, we can at least not solve the congestion, but we can certainly put a dent in it.
Ms. Shamro.
First of all, I would say, I think Beta, the people at Beta themselves would say they haven't reached their potential. I, I talk to people there a lot. And I don't hear anybody saying, we're, we're happy. Let's just leave it this way. Bay Lines, I think has been around for about two years, or not even two years now. And Destination Downtown, which is a partnership with the DDA, is relatively new as well, which offers free rides to employees on any route, not just the Bay Line. I, from what I have talked to with Beta throughout this, and what I'm hearing out there is, this is the first of many. But it does take underwriting right now from sponsorship, essentially, from businesses. So, one of the things I'm very excited for is this Traverse Connect study that we've kind of referenced about the missing middle of ages living here, how we can work with businesses to raise wages. I think another thing we can talk about is bringing more public transportation options available and working with Beta on that. So, I'm excited about the potential of Beta. I don't see them as failing. I see them as really striving over the last couple of years to make up that gap and continue to move it forward.
Ms. Walter.
I love Beta. And in fact, riding the Bay Line with my girls across Traverse City this summer and putting our bikes on was one of the highlights of our summer, being connected to community in that way. And just, you know, experiencing a really great aspect of our community that has a lot more potential, for sure. Like, as was already mentioned, park and ride would be a great solution to reaching some of that potential that's underserved in our community. Beta's excellent at communication and making it cool to be part of public transit. And that's a, a huge thing, to be able to get the word out about something. And we can all learn a lot from that to change habits, to become healthier and more community-connected, to be able to, thank you, to be able to communicate well across all spectrums. So, thanks to Beta for including all of us in your inclusivity.
Ms. Bertadaro.
Yeah, I never thought that I would be excited about public transportation. And then I met Tyler Bevieu. And he's, he's clearly passionate about it. They're doing a fantastic job. Has it met its potential? Absolutely not. There's more that we can do. And I think that something that we can encourage is business involvement in Beta. Again, sponsorships. And I, I think it's mutually beneficial. And I hope to see more partnerships like that in the future.
Mr. Carruthers.
The potential for Beta has not been met, but we've got a good start with Beta. The Bay Line has been very successful. Destination Downtown is a little bit rocky. Talking to Gene Drenzy, we're handing out a lot of passes to employees, but they're just not using them. So, we need to convince our employees to actually use that. I've spoken with Kelly Dunham about expanding our park and ride system, getting people who do commute to the city to be able to park on the outskirts and take the bus in. We've had energy-efficient buses in the past. I think we need to start advocating for that. Maybe connecting some of the larger condominium and apartment complexes in our region with, with a better line, the north-south line. But we also have to realize that public transportation is heavily subsidized. And we'll always have to be heavily subsidized to make it work. So, we, as a community, have to support Beta and support subsidizing it if we want it to work. So, that's something we're challenged by because it's tax dollars that make it really work.
Thank you. We'll start our next round with Mr. Durbin. But I've been asked to remind you that if you need another blank card or a card, just raise your hand. A league member will get that to you. And you can write your question. Thank you. All right. Our next question. Mr. Durbin. Would you support or oppose the most recent tree ordinance proposal for Traverse City? Why or why not?
Well, I think everybody loves trees, right? I know I do. And they're, they're an important part of our community. Traverse City is a tree city. And we've got some amazing trees. If you walk around the neighborhoods, it's, it's amazing. As far as the recent ordinance, you know, it's, it's one of those things where, because we all love trees and value them, we want to protect them. And I think that's important. I, I think we also have to be careful about over-regulating or over-ordinancing things in our community. And some things can be better, better served with, with a carrot instead of a stick. So, I think that education on trees, I think encouraging people not to cut down trees may be a better option. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm very concerned about trees. It's part of the natural environment. And I had an arborist at my home just in the last couple of weeks to estimate some tree work that I'm going to have done, including hanging Christmas lights on my large Colorado blue spruce for the first time. I love it when I see a big tree like that. Let's just talk about trees right along the river again. I'll finish where I left off. The, the city ordered a company to remove trees on a steep slope behind the post office. And I opposed that, but it was too late. And the, the city official I spoke to told me, what do you want me to do? Cancel the contract? And I said, yeah, because you shouldn't be cutting there. Now, trees were cut at the Pine Street Development Project at Front and Pine, across from the old Traverse State Bank there. And now, the property is for sale where the trees were cut. And that should have happened in the reverse order. The trees should have been left before the property went up for sale. Now, there are trees missing along the shoreline that protected the, the water and shaded it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Menneven.
Thank you. I would support the most recent tree ordinance. And again, not because I, I don't agree with Dave. I do appreciate the carrot versus the stick, but mainly because it was a compromise. They came back with the stakeholders, the, the developers and the, the utility people and, and others in the community that had skin in the game and helped, you know, improve that original draft. So, I would support it for that reason. I also would like to see the city come back to having an, an arborist who would work directly with those utilities and with the developers to preserve our tree canopy. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I support the tree ordinance as well. You know, Traverse City is near ideal canopy coverage. I'd like to see the city actually hit ideal or beyond that. And I think the tree ordinance is a step in the right direction.
Mr. Putman.
I support the tree ordinance partially because I helped in, in writing it. So, it'd be remiss of me to say otherwise. But it, it's, it's an effort to, of course, produce a document that is a living, breathing organism. There's, there's, does it have flaws? I'm certain it does. But it's, it's an effort to try to draw more of a cooperative spirit between developers and, and citizens and residents and city staff to come up with the conclusions and solutions to maintaining our tree canopy and preserving the quality of, of our neighborhoods in that regard and also our development, developmental process. So, I, I do support it at this point, but it doesn't mean we can't tweak it and make it better. That's what it's about. Democracy rules.
Ms. Shamro.
Well, much similar to Mr. Putman's point, I, I support the version that I know is out there right now. I believe it's actually heading to planning. This is part of the process. Ms. Bertadaro kind of referenced this as well. Oftentimes, an idea will come about. It'll be brought forward by a group. And then it goes through the process. And so, it's been through this ad hoc with people I very much respect, their opinions, both from planning and from our city commission, and is now being put forth, the planning. There might still be more tweaks on it. So, we don't know what it's going to finally look like. I think there's, I'd agree, there's some room for improvement. But I think that that's a really good document as it is right now. And I, and we'll see where it ends up. Also, I really am hoping that we can get our staff that has this expertise to help us enact this, the support they need at the lower levels. Our tree experts shouldn't be out actually watering the trees. That's why we had the discussion about a new employee, somebody who could... That's why we had the discussion about a new employee, somebody who could fill those gaps and allow those who are experts to actually go out and do the work we need them to do with their expertise. So that's, I'm very much in favor of trees. I love our tree city.
Ms. Walter?
Thank you. Better is better. I think it's, the ordinance is better than it was, but I don't think it goes far enough to protect our tree canopy, and I don't want it, once it finally is passed, to be shelved and not continue to be stewards of our environment. Without constant stewardship, we will see degradation of our environment, and we have to stay on top of it. I think, like I said, it's an improvement, but I don't think it's gone far enough. I also do support the hiring of a professional forester or arborist, someone who knows what they're doing and shares their expertise with the city. That's very important for the future of our tree canopy and the health and quality of life of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Ms. Bertadaro?
Yeah, so I touched on this earlier, because it is important, and it is still a living document, the ordinance, the last draft of it, that's not the one that's done yet. It will go to planning. I think that we need to listen to the experts and maybe not push them to go even further. We all love the tree canopy, we do, but we need to be reasonable in regards to development, and we already have setbacks in place. And then if you want to require a certain amount of trees and a certain amount of space, then you can't have the setback, and so then it doesn't make sense to build anymore, and construction costs are already astronomical here. So I think that we really need to be reasonable, and again, it's just going to be a balance of protecting the trees and also allowing us to have responsible growth here in Traverse City.
Mr. Crowthers?
As a Tree City USA, I support a tree ordinance. The current ordinance is being discussed at Planning Commission October 1st at 7:00 PM at their meeting. It was stated earlier that this was a rushed process. I would disagree. We, as a commission, hired our consultant to do a tree inventory and a tree study. We did a public outreach session with stakeholders, the library. We brought a lot of people to the table to try to craft something. We've gone through several iterations. It does get political, but we are moving this through the channels. It does take a lot of time in politics to get things done, as Commissioner Shamro pointed out in the beginning, that, you know, four years, sometimes you don't get stuff done. It takes a long time. But we're on our way. I think it's important as a, I've planted 20 trees in my little yard in downtown Traverse City, so trees are very important to me, and I do support that effort.
Mr. Dali?
Yeah, trees are incredibly important, especially in an urban environment. I mean, not only is it nice to see a nice tree-lined street, but they provide a cooling effect in cities that is just invaluable. I do support the ordinance as it currently exists. As has been mentioned, it's not in its final stage yet, but I would like to see it do more. I don't think it goes far enough. I think that in its current form, we have made some concessions to certain business interests that I don't think need to be made. There should be penalties for clear-cutting trees. We need to protect our tree canopy and do whatever we can to protect our trees, and we should also encourage and incentivize people to preserve their trees and to plant new trees. Thank you.
All right, very good. We've got several questions on short-term rentals, so I think we'll go there next. Concerned about short-term rentals and being rented out in residential areas, what's your position on the commercialization of neighborhoods and about regulating short-term rentals within the city and making sure that short-term rentals give back to the city in the way that hotels do? There's a lot there to unpack, I know.
Yeah, it's like six months.
I know, I know.
But I'll just talk about short-term rentals. Short-term rentals. Well, my personal experience is, I bought my house in '87 in a neighborhood that was zoned as a single-family home neighborhood, but in truth, on my street, there were apartments for rent, and nobody had any issue with that. And those were probably 12-month leases, you know, like a typical apartment rental lease. So they weren't short-term, unless you consider a year short-term. And no one had any problem with that. And next door to me was an adult foster care home where a large number of people lived in a small home, and I was concerned because they might not have been able to get out, have the access that they needed. Some of them were living in the basement. So now, behind me on Front Street, the family there used to own three homes, and they sold one. One now can accommodate a pretty good-sized family, so that has not been a problem. And in the next building, which the owner doesn't live in, they have ADU and apartments for rent, both. Okay?
Ms. Minervini?
I do not support the commercialization of our neighborhoods, and I think that a lot of us in the room agree, or at least I think we do, that neighborhoods represent community, where we know our neighbors, where we care about them, where we look out for one another. And I need to say that I do not have a problem with the tourist home ordinance the way it's written. I think it's fair that it should be a primary residence, owner-occupied opportunity for someone to stay in their homes or make a way for them to pay their taxes. I'm actually more concerned about the vacation rentals in our commercial districts, and I hope that that question comes up. But in terms of loosening restrictions or dropping the requirement for it to be owner-occupied or at least primary residence, I would not go for that. Thank you.
Mr. O'Shea?
Oh, Brian, I'm sorry. O'Shea. Owner-occupied, I don't have a problem with that. It has zero impact on our year-round housing. It offers people a way to, like Christie touched on, pay their bills, their taxes. I would also say that it offers people from outside of the community the opportunity to walk or bike to our fabulous downtown and enjoy it without the need for a vehicle, which I think is really important.
Putman?
Essentially, in a nutshell, a short-term rental situation, I do not advocate that we have them in residential districts. Certainly, our neighborhoods are important to us and probably one of the reasons that we're such a vibrant community. And I'd just like to take a chance to read something about what it's like to be a neighbor. This came to me from an email yesterday. For me, neighbor means being able, being there to help when someone is sick, taking over food when there's been a death, being a listening ear, sharing a laugh, waving at those walking by, shoveling someone out, mowing the lawn, helping a new neighbor feel welcome. And for me, just last week, being the first person there when a wife got a call telling her that her husband had died. And in that case, I know you know what I mean by neighbor. That's why you have my support and vote. But importantly, if you look at the examples of what short-term rentals have done to communities, Charlevoix, just to the north of us, my hometown, declining enrollment in schools, thank you.
Shamro?
Yeah, so that was a very complex question, so I'll try to address the layers as I remember them. We did pass a tourist home amendment that was all for owner-occupied back in the spring, and I think that was a good first step. I will echo something, some that have been said here and comments that were made during that process, which is owner-occupied housing rentals do help people keep their homes. We had young women, a young woman I remember in particular, who said this was allowing her to live in her home downtown, be part of downtown, but not have a full-time roommate and be able to make a little bit of money. I, as a single person, actually thought about doing that myself on a short-term, owner-occupied basis. It is a very good tool that we have as we have these discussions about how do people afford to live here. That said, our neighborhoods are our neighborhoods. We don't want to see houses being bought up and rented out empty. We don't want to see this becoming a party on the street. I think one other thing that, I'll try to sneak in really quick, was somebody mentioned the same fees that hotels pay. We don't actually get anything from hotels in this community, and we're actually trying to work to change that, and this could be our first step.
Ms. Walter?
Thank you. I think the reason a lot of us love Traverse City are our neighborhoods and our connection to our neighbors and the feeling we get walking through our neighborhoods, walking our dogs, walking to school, to work, and that would be destroyed if we let short-term rentals in our neighborhoods take over. We wouldn't feel community connection. Communities are first over individual property interests, in my opinion. As far as the current tourist home ordinance, I do support that and think it is a reasonable compromise and agree that if someone wanted to go away for a cherry festival for a week, they could rent their home out. That sounds like a lot of work to me, and I probably wouldn't get around to that, but I do support protection of our neighborhoods first.
Ms. Bertadaro?
Yes, I support short-term rentals if it is your primary residence. I do not support investors buying investment properties in our neighborhoods and essentially gutting our neighborhoods. And I know the dangers of that. That is the industry that I work in. I've been working with TC Tourism and Housing North, both, to address the last part of your question. As far as the short-term rentals giving back to the community and being able to pay in, right now, we cannot. As Ms. Shamro said, we, our hands are tied by the state, but we are working on policy, and we're getting down to Lansing to lobby to be able to do that and bring some money back into our community through this.
Mr. Crowthers?
I do not support the commercialization of our residential neighborhoods. However, I do support our current tourist home ordinance as we recently amended it. Providing owner-occupied residency for tourists is fine. I can tell you that our zoning administrator gets calls daily from people that would like to invest here in the tourist home markets, and if we do that, we'll end up like many of our tourist towns in this country that don't have people. I was just vacationing somewhere where there's 753 residents, and there's 400 tourist homes, excuse me, 4,000 tourist homes. It's a challenge. It's challenging for those that want to live here, it's challenging for affordable housing, it's challenging for keeping that neighborhood feel and knowing your neighbors. But as long as you're doing it as you live in your home and renting out a room, that's fine, and I think that's what we've provided with our short and long-term, or high and low-intensity ordinance that we've created. We need to create some data around that and see how it goes, but we should let it lie for a few years and see how it goes, and then revisit it later.
Mr. Dali?
Yeah, so I'm against the commercialization of many things, but especially our neighborhoods. I'm against full-time, short-term rentals anywhere, whether it's a neighborhood or in a condo development downtown. I do think that our current tourist home ordinance is a little too strict for people who own their homes. I think that if you own your home and you want to go out of town for two weeks and have people stay unhosted while you're gone for two, three weeks, I think that should be allowed. On the other hand, you know, if you want to buy a condo downtown and, you know, do a full-time, short-term rental, you are allowed to do that currently, and I don't think that that should be allowed.
All right. Mr. Durbin?
If we're going to have a productive conversation about short-term rentals, we have to make one distinction, and that is that the difference between an investment short-term rental and a primary resident's short-term rental. Because the issues that you hear when you read an article about how Airbnb destroyed my city, that has to do with investment properties. I think most of us, all of us up here, say we're against that. The primary residence is the home that we live in, my home, your home. You should be able to rent that out because it has zero impact on our long-term housing. It cannot affect it. Where the investments do take up long-term housing, they take up rental properties and homes that could be purchased. So that's the first thing we need to start with. Now we can start having a reasonable conversation, and I think I've taken up too much time to get into it. I'll be around. Hopefully, we can talk about commercial properties that are short-term rentals as well, because that is an issue.
All right. Our next question is about mental health, and it goes to Ms. Minervini. What more do you think the city could do to provide mental health services to low-income residents?
Oh, I would like the city to be more involved in providing mental health to all residents, regardless of their income. I learned a lot about mental health and also, too, the connection to addiction through my research and work with Safe Harbor. I feel like there are a lot of issues related to mental health that are costing the city right now. Emergency services for somebody who is mentally ill or even possibly on the street far outweigh the costs of treating them or housing them. So I don't know, as a city commissioner, exactly what tools we would have to use, but if they were available, you could be sure that I would be using them. Thank you.
Mr. Brian?
Yeah, Christie's right. I can't really build on what she said. As mayor, I would be in full support of any tools that the city has at its access.
Mr. Putman?
Having volunteered at Safe Harbor, and certainly, you get exposed to a lot of different things, but one of the elements of it, of course, is that a lot of these people desperately need help, and of course, being on the city commission, trying to come up with the solutions, one of the things, of course, would be to help try to stem the growth of homelessness and provide these people that need the help with adequate services and such. But without, at least addressing that issue, our homeless population will grow, and more and more people are being pushed out of their homes and out of their lifestyles and an ability to have a roof over their head. So one of the things to help with that process would be to implement plans to help stem homelessness.
Ms. Shamro?
Yes, so I'm going to be a slightly gray cloud over this and say, there's not a lot the city can do on its own, unfortunately. One of my first votes, I was very proud to take when I was elected, was for Safe Harbor. There was a lot of back and forth about, is this the right location near your neighborhood? But it's important to have the services that Safe Harbor offers and the links to all the groups that it works with, and that's how we do address these issues, is we make it, enable groups that are working with other groups or enable centers where these groups can operate from in the city, so that there is a one-stop shop, if you will. I also supported the needle exchange for this reason. As we well know, a lot of drug use is actually tied to mental health, untreated-up mental health issues. As these issues are raised, as solutions are put forward, or as we have the ability to examine the solutions, I will always support the city being able to do what we can to help with those. But the truth is, there's a county, community, mental health, and so we have to keep that communication open with the county as well to find all-around regional solutions.
Ms. Walter?
Thank you. I do agree, you know, the data is there, and I understand it to be that we are in a mental health crisis. Michigan's rate of suicide is increasing and at a record high, and we can be a real leader in our community to build a coalition of the organizations who have the expertise in this area and to elevate the voices of the people who are working on this issue. I think the city can really bring those disparate voices together so that we can get the services to the people that we know need those services. And to push more at the state level for more funding, I think the city can do more to lobby at that level to get more funding for the people who live in this region who are experiencing mental health crises.
Ms. Bertadaro?
Yeah, I think we need to look into the tools that we do have and the other organizations do have and support them as much as possible so we can be proactive instead of reactive, because the cost of being reactive is far greater. We need to support places like Safe Harbor and The Porch, and I think, you know, we're going to have to keep moving forward on this topic and just keep talking about it.
Thank you. Mr. Crowthers?
Mental health services for low-income residents isn't just a city issue. It's a regional issue, it's a statewide issue, it's a federal issue. I support the most vulnerable citizens in our community, which is why I supported the nondiscrimination ordinance. We need to support all of us and all those around us. And I agree pretty much with what's been said. We closed our mental health facility in the early '80s due to lack of funding, due to lack of state and federal funding. In my opinion, that was a mistake. We need to bring those facilities back, because I think many of us, in our own lives and in our own families, are dealing with these issues, and it's a very expensive process to deal with. So it's not something the city can just tackle. I think we need to have people from the entire state and the feds on board as well.
Mr. Dali?
Yeah, mental health is a huge issue. I think it touches all of us, whether we experience it ourselves or our family or friends. You know, it touches everybody. As has been mentioned, as a city commission, as a city commissioner, I'm not sure what tools we would be able to use to address this specifically, but I am in favor of all healthcare being free to all people at the point of service, so, including mental healthcare. So if there's a way that Traverse City is able to partner with the county or the state or the federal government to do something like that, I'm all for it.
Mr. Durbin?
Like most health issues, being reactive is more expensive, more costly, and is more devastating than being proactive. So as has been said, it sounds like at the city level, there's not a lot we can do, and with funding down throughout the state, throughout the country for mental health issues, probably the best we can do is to lobby. I mean, we country for mental health issues, probably the best we can do is to lobby. I mean, we, anybody who's got an ounce of compassion feels for people who have mental health issues, and there's a big umbrella. So I think, I think there are always things we can do as private citizens to lobby for these things and even at the city level. So I think that's where we start. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm very passionate about mental health. In my side of the street, in my block, there have been two suicides. And I think to bring up homelessness and homeless people, anything to do with mental health is just like not even thinking about what's really going on. It covers all demographics, covers working people, covers children. I've had many conversations with Carl, he's in charge of Northern Lakes Community Mental Health, and I just give my time to that. I've increased, when I was county commissioner, the dollars spent at the jail. Now, if you really want to see what it looks like up close, I can tell you, I've taken many tours of the jail, both the kind that the public is allowed to take, and then there's a little bit more that I've done. I met directly with an inmate who, I didn't have to be a medical doctor to know, he suffers from mental health problems. He needs help. He doesn't need to be in the jail. We have to attend to that. The jail is not a, is not a house for people with mental illness.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mr. O'Brien, and it has to do with taxes. This person is concerned about older folks being taxed out of their houses. How would you go about working within and creating a balanced budget and not increasing taxes?
Traverse City has a tax base issue. Our housing stock hasn't really increased for quite a while, so I think one of the main things that we can do is increase our density, which would increase our tax base, which then hopefully wouldn't raise the taxes on everybody, including myself.
Mr. Putman?
Basically, looking at the budget that we recently passed, not recently, but a while back, and it's a folder that's probably about two inches thick, and of course scrutinizing every line item is a pretty difficult task. It takes, it takes a lot of time to go over and understand it, especially for a rookie. But one of the close elements of scrutiny is to be able to effectively talk about those line items and try to come up with a conclusion that how they affect not just our seniors, but everybody in the community. So keeping the taxes from escalating and getting out of control to allow people to have more money for other discretionary income expenditures.
Ms. Shamro?
Well, I will say, as someone who, we've had to deal with this issue, it's not something that anybody would do lightly. It's not something I would ever want to do again. It's something that we would hold off on. But the truth of the matter is, as far as, you know, we definitely don't want anybody to lose their home. We have Proposal A that was passed in 1992 to protect home values and cap that increased growth rate. We have heavily rollback, which means even if you haven't been in your home since 1992, the longer you're there, the tax rate rolls back. And those are all things that need to be protected. They're also things that hamper us, if we don't get new growth, from having money to spend on streets and police and firemen and everything else that we need to run as a city. So we're always up here trying to strike this balance, and it's certainly not something that we toss around wildly that, you know, it's every dollar's there. We've got a couple of big houses and some new developments, so who cares if we raise the rates? We're very aware of the very mixed incomes and populations we have in this town, and we did something recently that we had to do. It's been, I think, eight years, and hope to not do it again. And I will not do it again.
Ms. Walter?
I support increased density downtown, and that will contribute to our tax base and help our community. I think we have a great story to tell in Traverse City that we're not doing enough of to our neighborhoods and the value that we are getting from our taxes. We had the honor as commission candidates to go on a tour of the city, organized by Benjamin and some other fine folks at the city. And it was enlightening, and it was to see all that our city does for us with the taxes that we pay. And I think if we tell that story to more people about our roads and our water treatment facility and our stormwater system, and we will feel better about the money that we put into our city. And I hope to share that story more and have a great community conversation around it, because it's important and one that we need to share together.
Ms. Bertatara?
So I think that one, one great way to be able to support people and not raise our taxes, well, we need to, we need to recognize that TIF is one of the tools that we have to pull from our surrounding areas. So we are a hub here. Our townships, the county as a whole, everybody comes here, they work, they use our infrastructure, and they're not contributing to our tax base unless we use tools like TIF. So if we support the extension of TIF 97, then we are able to pull that money to support some of our infrastructure projects. For example, the DDA is doing the match for the bridge projects. Otherwise, that money would have to come from our general fund. If we support the extension of TIF 97, we can get rid of surface lots, and we can build on those lots, which are largely useless right now, and increase our tax base.
Mr. Cruthers?
Well, I don't support trying to tax anybody out of their homes. But as was brought up by Commissioner Shamro, property taxes are sort of regulated by the state. Proposal A, heavily rollback, that's kind of out of our purview. It's not something we control. We do control fees, and the citizens do control millages. And I think that's the challenge for a lot of people, is we put greater fees on water and sewer. But the challenge is, we have aged, aging infrastructure that needs to be fixed, and we don't have enough money to fix it. So some of the fees have become more challenging for folks, and some of the millage requests that we have are becoming challenging for folks. But those are the areas that we can work with. I just, the property taxes, we're, this is, the state legislature deals with that. So I don't think we have a lot of opportunity to lower people's taxes on that level.
Mr. Dowd?
Yeah, so unfortunately, I don't think our taxes are going down anytime soon. And I think if we want to ensure that we don't have to raise anybody's taxes anytime soon, we do have to increase our tax base. We need to encourage more development, we need to encourage more people to move here into the city, because, you know, our services cost money, and we do have aging infrastructure, so that money's got to come from somewhere.
Mr. Durbin?
I'll echo some of these thoughts, that density, getting more people to live in Traverse City within the city limits is going to help our tax base. But I think, as a commissioner, we have to be aware, we have to be cognizant of how much any, even the smallest tax increases can affect people, especially on a fixed income. You know, I was talking to a friend whose, whose parents live in town, and even a $4 a month increase was worth discussing with them, because to them, that's, that's a meal. That's, that's, you know, how do we pay our cable bill? How do we pay our heat bill? So I guess, when it comes to taxes, the best we can do is be very responsible if and when the need arises to raise taxes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Can you rephrase the question?
Can I rephrase it?
Well, just repeat it, because the answers are so various, I just want to make sure.
Sure, sure. This person's concerned about older people being taxed out of their homes. How would you go about working within and creating a balanced budget and not increasing taxes?
Well, you can cut expenses. The county budget, $38 million, we cut things, and the city cuts things too. And sometimes, things that get cut are the wrong things. Like, for example, the city should have built a new restroom at West End Beach like 10 years ago, but they don't, because they say they don't have the money. I would say that nobody wants a tax increase, and cutting expenses is the way to kind of halt that growing tax bill. I'm a property taxpayer in Traverse City, as everybody is here. But I think we have to talk in terms of maybe some kind of libertarian idea that, you know, putting some kind of, you know, brakes on and taking a look at some things that we possibly don't need, or adding fees in other ways to increase the city's revenue so that taxes don't have to go up and could possibly go down.
Ms. Minervini?
So there's two ways to balance a budget. One, one way would be to spend less, and the other way would be to make more, and I'm in the camp of making more. I think that we've got tremendous opportunity to increase tax revenues with better density and development by encouraging our businesses and employers to come here, to stay here, to invest in our community. Our downtown far outperforms the neighborhoods, even when you consider that are the TIF extension. So it's important that we don't keep cutting, 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 and then making Traverse City's, you know, a place that people don't want to live or stay or invest in. So I definitely support the idea of growing by investing in fiber and other infrastructure improvements and encouraging people to improve their properties or to, to build here and, and grow their businesses.
Thank you. Onto parking. We've had several questions. I'm going to try to condense them down, because almost all of them mention something to do with TIF, so parking and TIF. Starting with Mr. Putman, do you support the construction of a new parking deck? How do we pay for it? Could or should we use TIF for financing?
Parking is certainly a terrific issue here in town, as we all know. And I'd like to say, we don't have a parking problem, we've got a car problem. So where we put those cars is important. But one of the things that we have to look at with the TIF extension would be a long-term debt and an assignment of those taxes to a specific building that, in my mind, of course, the footprint for that location for the new parking deck is too small. The net gain for parking spaces hardly, in my mind, in my humble opinion, necessitates an expenditure of 15 to 20 million dollars to build it. Whereas those monies that are currently being held by TIF, of course, could be better used down the line for improving city infrastructure, if the money would go back to the general fund.
Ms. Shamro?
Yes, so I was actually on the ad hoc that looked at the parking deck and moved the recommendations forward to still be considered at planning, DDA, and city commission. The truth of the matter is, if we want a parking deck, it has to come from TIF. We don't have millions and millions laying around at the general fund, as we've all been talking about here. We're making careful choices every year. So TIF is an investment that we can have. I think if we're going to renew it or extend it, it's going to be a careful, considered time period to extend it, not indefinite, not 20, 25 years. That's been mapped out. Actually, our leaving commissioner, Lewis, who will be gone in a month, has kept amazing spreadsheets. There's a lot of information that we've looked over and pored over on this that will be available for the bodies that will be making the decision. It's a high price tag, but what the people have to, what people have to decide is, do we want a parking deck, or do we want to have it spill into the neighborhoods? Because Destination Downtown and Beta, and all of these are doing great jobs. If those are 10 to 15 to 20-year solutions, what we're dealing with is what we need to do right now. And that's what it boils down to, is parking deck means TIF, or we don't get one.
Ms. Walter?
Thank you. It seems counterintuitive to talk about environment and parking deck at the same time, but they are connected. And I see them as very intertwined. Our land is so valuable downtown, both from a quality of life and tax base and resource standpoint. But also, it's valuable because the development will come whether we like it or not, and we don't want it to take up any more open space outside of our city. And so if we turn the parking lot into a parking deck, it'll help with that. And I do understand that TIF 97 is really the only solution to pay for that, and I support the extension of that. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bertatara?
I think I brought up this extension a couple of times, so people should probably know where I stand. I support the extension of it. It's not, it's not about the parking deck. It's about the deck giving us the ability to get rid of these surface lots, which the stormwater runoff right into our river is, is bad for our water supply, first of all. Second of all, from an economic standpoint, we will be able to then develop these open lots and increase our tax base in doing so. So I see the extension of TIF 97 and the subsequent building of the parking deck to be beneficial in numerous ways, and I support that.
Mr. Cruthers?
I was also on the committee with Commissioner Shamro to talk about the future of a parking deck on the west side of town. Unfortunately, we were backed into a corner a number of years ago to purchase a piece of property that might have been too small and too expensive for us to do this. So we're sort of tied to this piece of property at this point. The deck is looking like it's going to be $19 million. The current TIF extension would pay for it if we did so, but currently, the TIF projects that are in the plan would get paid for if we didn't extend the TIF. And that's the only reason we would extend the TIF right now, is to pay for a parking deck. It'll pay for all the other projects. I've suggested for quite some time and have talked to Kelly Dunham at Beta about maybe investing in a better, robust park-and-ride system and get people parking on the edges of town in some of our lots in the larger complexes like Myers or the mall, and have a regular, every 10-minute bus that circulates downtown, and get our downtown employees and people who come downtown parking there and using the bus.
Mr. Dowd?
I'm generally in favor of extending TIF to build a parking deck on West Front Street. However, I'd like to see it designed in such a way that 10 years from now, 20 years from now, it can be retrofitted into something else. I'm of the opinion that people, you know, driving their personal automobile to and from destinations is not a trend that's going, going to continue for decades to come. So I don't think it makes a lot of sense to use public funds to build something that's primarily only going to be for that. Just philosophically, I don't support the subsidizing of the storage of people's personal automobiles. But I do understand that we have a need right now. We shouldn't have cars parking up and down our neighborhood streets. So, you know, I would generally be in supportive of extending TIF to pay for a parking deck, as long as it's easily retrofitted into something else.
Mr. Durbin?
It sounds like we're all kind of in agreement on this, in that the extension of TIF for the parking garage is the only option if we want a parking garage. I too like the idea of exploring options with Beta to see what we can do to avoid a parking garage. It seems like with a lot of these issues, we're at a tipping point, where things have been talked about, whether it's housing, expanding our, or diversifying our economy, where it's coming to a head and we need to start doing something about it. And this issue kind of feels that way, too. We're at this tipping point where we'd much rather go green and figure out ways for us to, to transport ourselves, mobilize downtown without the need of vehicles and parking decks. But if, if it is decided that we want a parking deck, then yes, I support expanding or extending TIF 97. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I've got a different opinion on the parking deck. The parcel of land is too small. It's not going to work efficiently, and there won't be an entrance or exit on State Street or Pine Street or West Front Street. It's all going to be through the alley. It just looks like a poorly conceived idea. That property could be used for a higher purpose than parking cars. That's an excellent piece of property there. It is too small for a parking deck. You cannot go down into the ground more than maybe one level. And I bet you, if this continues on, the city will want to go over 60 feet, and that'll be something we can all talk about. They will. I mean, it doesn't fit in the lot. So there is another parking lot by, you know, behind Garland and Hall Street that is a city parking lot, and that could be where the deck is. There's already a bridge across the river. Add about one-minute walk to anybody who needs to park their car in the vicinity of those buildings. And I just think it's poorly conceived, and pushing it, pushing it, pushing it is the wrong idea.
Ms. Minervini?
I'm on record as supporting the extension of TIF and also a West End deck. I am concerned about spending upwards of $38,000 a parking space. I think that that's high, and it was mentioned that in order, you know, to bring those costs down, we may need to go above 60 feet, and I don't know if residents have the stomach for that. But I am also worried about the $1.5 million a year that we would be leaving on the table from the county and the surrounding jurisdictions if we don't extend TIF. The investment in infrastructure downtown, as well as the maintenance of the downtown, would fall back on all of us if we move to the general fund and left that $1.5 million on the table. So is there a better location, possibly? But does TIF 97 need to be extended? Absolutely.
Mr. O'Brien?
I'm all in favor of extending TIF 97 as well. Katie touched on it. The parking deck leads us to possibly revitalizing the surface lots, which would hopefully make up the $40,000 per parking space, hopefully. So I'm all in favor of extending TIF for the parking deck.
All right, thank you. Unfortunately, if we don't want to go too far over, that is going to be our last question of the of the evening. But I will tell you some of the other topics that were handed to me on cards, ranging from fiber optics to green space, the DDA, regulating lawn chemicals, the senior center, and parking meters. Members of the League will get these questions out to you all, I'm sure, so you can see what's on people's minds tonight. Time to start our closing statements. Again, you get one minute, and we will begin with Ms. Shamro.
Well, as we've seen through the evening, one minute can be a lot of time, but it can be very little time as well. So I want to thank everyone again for coming and hosting us. As we answer these questions, they're very brief. I hope everyone will feel free to approach me either after this or via email or any other resource, because there is so much more to say on so much of this. And I'll just, actually, I'm going to leave it at that. Please reach out to me. I look forward to speaking to more people as I go door-to-door here, coffee, whatever works for anybody. This is a lot deeper than a minute, so I hope to speak to many of you soon.
Ms. Walter?
Thank you. Thanks for coming out tonight and sharing your questions. I look forward to answering those and hearing more of your issues as we enter into this community conversation together. We won't always agree on everything, but I want you to know that the way I come to my decision-making is by listening and critical thinking and listening to all sides. Sometimes I do change my mind, and I pride myself on being an active representative, someone who listens and takes the time to hear your experience in our community. So I look forward to serving you. It would be an honor to be your city commissioner, and I look forward to speaking with you afterward as well. Thank you.
Ms. Bertatara?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me and for putting this on. This is a fun experience. I enjoy talking about these issues. This is the kind of stuff that I annoy my friends with by beating them to death. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk, and I'm more than willing to chat further on any of the issues or things that we didn't get to tonight. I look forward to speaking with you. Thank you.
Mr. Brothers?
Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I want to thank all of the people that came to participate. I want to thank our residents for supporting me as their mayor for the past four years and as a city commissioner for eight years prior to that. I look forward to your support for the next two years to continue being your mayor. I feel like I've been a strong advocate for our citizenry, our environment, our town, our character, our businesses, our residents, everybody. I serve at your pleasure, and it's been an honor for me to serve you, and I would like to do that for two more years. And I look forward to your vote in November. So I get stopped in the grocery store, I get stopped in restaurants. We have a time after this evening to talk more, so please, you know, network with me, network with all of us. We're all here to communicate with you, and we'd like to answer your questions further when we can. So thank you, and thank you for your support.
Mr. Dowler?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this event. This is a vital event for our democracy, and I'd like to thank you all for coming out and agreeing what we have to say. Thank you, Mr. S. Baggers, for being our moderator. You know, I understand what it's like to be a working-class person here in Traverse City. I live paycheck to paycheck. I have two jobs to make ends meet. So I bring that perspective, or I would bring that perspective to city government. And, you know, I think that that is a needed perspective. I look forward to speaking with you. I look forward to talking to you as I go door-to-door. I would love for you to reach out to me, and we can, you know, go get a coffee or something anytime. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Durbin?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, too. What a great opportunity to share ideas. It feels like, as I mentioned earlier, in Traverse City, there's a lot of things kind of coming to a head, important things, you know? The view of the bay for half the pay, our local economy needs to change. We need higher-paying year-round jobs. We really didn't talk much about housing tonight, and that's one of the biggest issues that we're facing. And that's something that we've been talking about. I moved here 20 years ago, and I remember not being able to find a place downtown, and it's even harder now. It hasn't gotten better. You know, climate change and the environment, we really didn't get a chance to talk much about that either. But these are all things that are coming to a head, and it's going to take leadership and decision-making skills to get, to take action on these things. So hopefully, you'll consider me for your vote in November. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here, especially all the candidates. I went to a League of Women Voters Forum once in the past, and some of the candidates boycotted it. So I'm glad that everybody is together enough to all come to the same place and put aside their egos. There is another opportunity to hear from the candidates coming up. It'll be at the library, and Elizabeth Wayland is here. She might be able to tell me the date, but the Bordenman Neighborhood is holding a candidate night at the library coming up. So it'll be another chance to ask us questions, but you could feel free to contact us. And I thank you again for being here. I gave you my most thoughtful answers. I'm very passionate about this. This is a job I want. I will work at it as hard as you can imagine. I will work twice as fast as the four-year term people because my term will be two years. So I will be like the little busy beaver, working very hard. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, if you may?
Hi, I'm running for the two-year term because I want to protect, nurture, and grow Traverse City in a way that honors its history and its character, but also provides for the quality of life and opportunities that we need to survive and thrive. I want my daughter to have the ability to return to Traverse City and raise her family if she wishes. Something we didn't talk about tonight that's near and dear to me is this idea of promoting better public engagement. It's so heartening to see you all out engaged in the process tonight, and I want to thank you and the League. And also, too, what we can do as leaders to encourage a more civil discourse. My mantra, if I'm leading for you, is listen, learn, lead. I don't claim to have all the answers, but I will do my homework, and I will always make myself available either by phone, cup of coffee, email. I'm here to serve you, to listen to you, and to represent you. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you to everybody that's here. But most importantly, thank you to my mother and father for raising me in this community and creating this passion that I have for Traverse City, and like I said in the very beginning, offering it to my children and other people's children as well. I look forward to speaking with every one of you one-on-one. I'm not the greatest public speaker, so if anybody ever wants to get a cup of coffee, please, that's my thing.
Mr. Pottler?
I don't have all the answers. If I did, perhaps I'd have a business card that said consultant instead of commissioner. But one of the things that I've found over the past year, first of all, it's been an honor to serve on the commission, and if a year is it, it's been an exciting prospect. But I need four more years to try to figure out and understand our master plan and our ordinances, of course. But it's a difficult job, and I admire the younger people for stepping up and taking the opportunity to run for office because it's an important issue. We have to work together in a unified effort, not in an individual effort, not with personal bias attached, but get together and come up with some conclusions that are for the better of the community and not for personal.
All right, thank you very much. Do you carry the master plan with you everywhere? I'm just curious.
Just about.
It was the only prop you used.
It's been an interesting process, I'll tell you, but I have memorized it, I can tell you that.
All right. Well, I want to thank the League of Women Voters, of course, for hosting this event. All of you involve citizens. Great questions. Sorry we couldn't get to them all, but the candidates will be around afterwards to answer questions. And let's thank all of the candidates for being here and being responsive. Thank you.